And I know just with everything that we're dealing with, with all the cutbacks, with all the schools that we're having to close down for now because of the limited facilities funding we have, I wanted to look at what, I wanted to at least talk through what that will look like in the future. I'm not ready to have that conversation quite yet, but I've at least already reached out to Metro Legal and then Mr. Profit let me know that that $700 was just kind of a final payment for this, this round of development. But also that we'll actually be getting some of that, some of that fee will be offset by negotiation with them. So I appreciate you, Mr. Profit and your, your office for dealing with that. But I also want us to have a large, take a larger look at what this will look like to build one brand new school. We don't have any facilities funding left, especially if we don't get any in the future over the next year or two, like we didn't get any this past year. That could be detrimental to some of our schools. And I just want to make sure that we really have a thorough understanding of what that will look like for the property in Antioch, because we know for a fact that we need another property out there and we're hoping to purchase some land. But then what happens if we have to just sit on that land and can't do anything with it for a decade or two because we don't have facilities funding? So I just want to put that on your radar. Not ready to bring it to the board quite yet, but I'd love for you all to start asking questions so that we can make sure that our, you know, that our administration is properly prepared to present to us. Thank you.
Sure. Does somebody else have some discussion?
Yes, that was me, Peter Player. I just had a quick question. Can Dr. Battle discuss the Central Office reorganization? I know there was some discussion about it during the budget hearing from the Metro Council members. And so for those of them who are watching or just questioned about it, can you just have some discussions since there have been concern about Central Office and the organization there?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Claire Peters, for that question. Yes, what you have on the consent agenda references back, actually many conversations ago with regards to the reorg at Central Office, really solving for, during this budget crisis, solving for some efficiencies at Central Office. Of course, anytime you're, you're discussing positions or span of control at Central Office, it's, it's not an easy thing to accomplish. But given our budget crisis and solving for efficiencies in our operations, what you have before you is the, the Central Office reorganization. That reorganization, what you have in front of you includes the removal of a few positions at Central Office to allow for some restructuring to bring different departments together and/or to shift roles and responsibilities.
Anybody else have any questions?
Ms. Shepherd, this is Jill Spearing. I just want to remind Ms. Bugs that Hillwood property has already been approved by the board about a year ago. Thank you.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
I was just going to say the same thing. The board has made a decision on the Hillwood property and it's a very fair process. You know, this is not about one school taking over the others. You know, we, we know that we have a very fair capital funding process that takes into account overall factors. I'm happy to revisit that, but I think that's what the, the capital funding discussion is about every year. And once the board votes on, you know, a project like this, then it's out of our hands. It's up to the mayor and the council as to whether to fund it. And they do have, you know, the, the right to decide where they put the funding, but, but it, it's really out of our hands. So just wanted to remind people about the process and the appropriate time to bring that up. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, this is Bugs.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, uh, in the future, we'll be bringing this up. I want to make sure that we actually hear from the professionals who understand the process, who can walk us through step by step. How do we make sure that we are advocating for a facilities funding for, yes, you know, budgeted materials, but also for schools that we know need them equitably? So I just want to have a thorough discussion from the people who know it best, Metro Legal and our facilities team. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Bugs, this is Amy. I just want to say that's what we do during the capital needs process. And if you want to revisit that, I'm happy to revisit it or whoever gets my seat will be here probably for that discussion. But we do have a fair and equitable process that was set up a long time before we all got on the board. And so just want to say that, you know, it would be probably best to, to discuss that during the capital funding, but it's, it's the will of the board, however we want to move forward. Thank you.
Again, this is Bugs. I still look forward to that conversation. Thank you so much.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Well, we have a, a motion that's possibly seconded the discussion as open on the consent agenda. Dr. Speer, will you please do a roll call vote?
Dr. Gentry?
Aye.
Dr. Gentry votes aye, Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye, Ms. Speering?
Aye.
Ms. Speering votes aye, Ms. Bugs?
Aye.
Ms. Bugs votes aye, Ms. Bush? Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye, Ms. Pippa Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Pippa Walker votes aye, Ms. Frog?
Aye.
Ms. Frog votes aye, Ms. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Shepherd votes aye. Madam Chair, you have eight ayes.
Thank you very much, Dr. Speer. I appreciate it. We will move on to the director's report. That would be Dr. Battle.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll just take a second here to get PowerPoint up on the screen. Okay. Again, thank you, Madam Chair and board members. You know, just a few long months ago, we were moving steadily through the lessons, activities, and events we've come to expect and count on throughout the school year. With spring break fast approaching, it looked like 2019, 2020 would wind down with just as much excitement and celebration as previous years have. We all know what happened next. Devastating tornadoes followed almost immediately by a world changing pandemic. But none of that has stopped you from working hard every day to serve our students and their families, which is evident in the feedback and support you continue to receive. Next slide, please. Let's begin with what's most important: our students, families, and employees. I hope you have seen the video that has made it around the world of our students' pure joy of accomplishment. This is Dontrell Spencer. He represented the deep connection so many of our students have for their schools. If this school year taught us anything, it is the essential role our public education system plays in Nashville and the powerful work of our employees. I believe in our world-class teachers. I've seen how our nutrition and transportation teams are lifelines to communities. I've seen principals, assistant principals, counselors, and support employees engage with students and families and keep their schools running smoothly every day. And I often hear from parents about the strong connection they feel with their schools. This is why we do what we do. Next slide, please. Although we face unimaginable events this school year, our actions have remained grounded in three priorities. First, we can accomplish incredibly ambitious goals with excellent people who lead from every position. Second, when we have our house in order and have a supportive culture, we are able to focus on the complex tasks that face us. This one took on an entirely new context as our buildings were damaged during the tornadoes and we were forced to shutter them during the pandemic. Our goal from August was to align our focus to individual students instead of school buildings that the state and others attempt to put labels on. When we personalize our efforts to an individual student, we will recognize the great work happening across the district and rise to the unique potential of every student. Next slide, please. But let's go back to day one. Our team acted on their professional expertise to have one of our best openings of any school year. We were thrilled to see our students return and the potential they each bring year after year. However, we know we have work to do. We had far too many vacancies in our schools. Later in the year, we were able to recruit a highly regarded new leader for our human resources department, Dr. Chris Barnes, to tackle these challenges. Dr. Barnes' background of leading large school districts, HR departments, along with his experience as a principal, made him perfectly suited to lead our number one priority. Our path toward transformation begins with well-executed fundamentals. MMPS welcomed students into the impressive renovation at McMurray Middle School and in addition at Hillsborough High School. Importantly, MMPS and city leaders unveiled the historical marker for Mr. Kelly's significant impact on desegregating our schools. It is important to pause and celebrate the great work of our teachers, principals, students, and families. We had the highest number of award schools ever, or should I say so far. We have more work to do. That's why I was so pleased to recruit Tennessee's preeminent school turnaround expert, Dr. Sharon Griffin, to our team. We will dramatically reduce our number from priority schools over time through systemic interventions while continuing to increase our numbers of award schools. We had a school named a National Blue Ribbon School. Our students earned some of the most prestigious national awards and our teachers were recognized nationally as experts in their subject areas. We had renewed investment in our schools from our nonprofit and business communities. Pencil began our school year with a first-of-its-kind celebration and supplies for our teachers. United Way, Representative Harold Love, and many others helped our students start this school year with school supplies. Jeff Bezos and Amazon announced a major new investment in our middle school coding program. The Titans donated to Community Achieves. The list goes on and on. But needless to say, our community believes in MMPS. It is important to our culture that we pause and recognize the success of our colleagues and our collective work for students. We owe it to our students and families to make clear progress on student outcomes. The board adopted four priority key performance indicators around literacy, numeracy, discipline, and attendance. Due to the interruptions this year, we don't have a complete, complete year's worth of data, or any data in some instances. However, this year is about setting a foundation for transformation. Lasting change requires a well-thought-out, research-based theory of action. This theory leverages the components that drive MMPS: students, leadership from all staff and communities, to drive toward the common goal of achieving student outcomes. We must prioritize our greatest needs, develop creative solutions to, to those challenge areas, and catalyst for change. We know that if district leaders and departments use a service model approach to providing personalized school supports with specialized understandings of student achievement data, school and family needs, community partnerships, and build climates and cultures, and if school-level leaders help teachers strengthen professional practices through providing quality coaching and feedback, developing cultures of candor and trust, and using data strategically, then teachers will be able to teach at the highest levels of effectiveness with a greater number of additional supports and research, resources, which will help students be ready to enter college and enter careers as well-rounded citizens. We want to do everything we can to help our students succeed after they leave us. Our graduates go to Nashville State Community College more than any other college or university. So we started working with Nashville State last year on a joint venture to create more and better pathways for students to go from high school to post-secondary education to careers. We call this initiative Better Together, and that's exactly what it's all about. Both MMPS and Nashville State are strong organizations, but we're even stronger when we work together and when we can make a bigger impact on our students that way. This means an unprecedented level of data sharing. It means a big expansion in dual enrollment opportunities for our students so they can get college credit while they're in high school, because we know that makes a big difference in their change, chances for success. It means doing more in the summer to help students move ahead, realize their potential, and achieve their dreams. And when we do all of this, our students will be better prepared to join Nashville's workforce and build successful careers, which will make employers and the larger community stronger as well. I look forward to sharing more about Better Together as we continue to develop and implement it. Now, late at night on March 2nd, tornadoes tore through our, through our town, destroying properties and devastating many lives. Our staff volunteered to deliver goods and meals to the families of MMPS who were impacted and without power or shelter. The tornado, tornadoes also significantly damaged two of our school buildings, Meg's Middle Magnet and Robert Churchwell Museum Magnet Elementary. We had to act quickly and decisively to ensure that the students and staff of each school would have a home to go to when schools reopen the next week. That's just what we did: placing students in Churchwell and Park Avenue Elementary and bringing Graymar and Jerry Baxter under one roof to make sure all students and staff remained together, and they were before the, as they were before the tornadoes. We thought this would have to be a solution for the remaining months of the school year, but little did we know at that time that there would only be three days left of classes in school. On March 11th, we had to make the difficult decision to close our school facilities the next day in order to protect our staff, our students, and their families from exposure to the virus. It was two days before spring break, but it became obvious, obvious, obvious and fairly quickly that we probably wouldn't be back to school anytime soon. This also wasn't going to be a normal school closure. We delivered meals and food in the past when schools were out, but we were facing a situation where supermarket shelves were going bare. Many families were losing their jobs and livelihood, and we had to make sure that our students and families had the nutrition they needed. Our nutrition services team developed a plan to deliver breakfast and meals at schools across the city and through bus stop locations, making sure who needed it could have a meal they normally wouldn't have, would have gotten at school. Our Community Achieves team also stepped up to work with Second Harvest to give food boxes to families in need. Our curriculum team provided remote learning options and enrichment packets to keep our students learning while we developed more robust plans to continue education while our facilities were closed. Our schools closed right at the end of the third quarter. Our first focus was on making sure the high school seniors could graduate on time to prepare themselves for college. We loaned laptops for seniors who needed credit recovery to put the finishing touches on their academic career. Through waivers and internal policy decisions, testing was canceled for the year and grades were set, but we knew that we owed it to our students and families to give them a meaningful, enriching education, whether it was graded or not. Our instructional technology and curriculum teams deserve enormous credit for helping to develop and implement plans to support our students. Curriculum and instruction teams developed material packets and guidelines for teachers in all grade bands so that students could continue to progress academically. Our instructional technology team created a plan to collect and prepare 10,000 laptops to loan to students so they could access Schoology and connect with their teachers and fellow students. In doing all of this, we learned a great deal about our capacity as a district, about the ability of teachers to educate their students remotely, about our need to reduce and eliminate the digital divide that separates our students who come from families with means from those who come from families without. Now, we must use the information we gathered and put it to work as we develop our plans for the upcoming school year and for years to come. We should have been more prepared coming into this crisis, but past budget constraints put technology for students on a back burner. Now, it is at the front, and we need to come together as a district and a community to provide all of our students with access to the technology that they'll need and that will need if we, we are to be prepared for teaching and learning regardless of the environment we are faced with. Everyone in the MMPS family has been through an ordeal this year, but our class of 2020 especially has been hard hit as many of our seniors were looking forward to participating in the many different traditions that couldn't happen as normal due to social distancing requirements. We knew we had to do everything we could to give our students a meaningful graduation experience that celebrates their accomplishments. I was so excited to see the joy on the faces of the students, their parents, and our faculty as graduates picked up their diploma covers and got to wave goodbye to their fellow graduates and the teachers who got them where they are today. But the celebration isn't over. We're working on a graduation ceremony video to air later in June, and then in July, we're optimistic we will be able to host in-person graduation ceremonies and celebrations for our graduates. We've designated July 18th through July 26th for potential dates to host events. And based on the current progress on the mayor's roadmap to reopening, I think we can get to that point where people can gather to celebrate. But of course, we will put health and safety of everyone first, so we will continue to monitor the situation with COVID-19 and work with health experts to develop these graduation plans to keep everyone safe. Internally, we've been working on the Metro Schools Reimagine Initiative for most, most of the school year, meeting in teams and small groups to help think through and develop plans to support our clusters, to put them on the best path forward to support the academic and social-emotional needs of all our students. Of course, the part of the plan that has gotten the most attention so far has been the consolidations necessary to refocus our resources and maximize the purchasing power of our schools. These are always difficult and sometimes painful discussions, but I believe we and this board made the right decisions in the best interest of the students we serve, and that it will enhance the effectiveness of our strategies for supporting the improvement of all schools within their clusters. We look forward to continued community engagement and board engagement on making sure that the plan fits the unique needs of the students in the clusters and at their schools, and that we'll see enrollment increases and improved academic and SEO outcomes as a result. The end of the school year is the beginning of summer, and education must continue in order to prevent the summer slide and advance academic progress. Starting on Monday, we'll be launching our virtual summer experience to give our students a wide range of opportunities to learn in a safe, remote setting. The virtual summer experience will include enriching courses and give our students and staff more practice on these digital platforms that may be more and more necessary in the upcoming school year. We will be hosting approximately 1,300 sessions covering nearly 120 topics. Classes will be available to parents and other caregivers as well. This will be a great opportunity for youth and adults to discover, connect, and engage. Meaningful engagement is critical to good planning that provides the best outcomes. The Director's Teachers Cabinet has brought together teachers of the year to give important feedback that has informed decisions about or around disciplinarian and SEO policies. These discussions have also helped to guide me through our remote learning rollout and planning. The Parent Advisory Council not only gives feedback, but also serves as an important advocacy tool for parents to engage other parents in the education of their children and, and the promotion of Metro Nashville Public Schools. And then there's the Director's Student Cabinet, which allows me to get input from students on what is working and what is not for themselves and their peers. At the end of the day, students not only have to be at the center of all our decision-making, but should be at the table in order to make the best possible decisions. MMPS will continue providing food to students and families over the summer months. Meals for children age 18 and younger will continue to be available at the 16 school locations and 40 bus stops around the district where we've provided them over the past two months. Meanwhile, our MMPS Community Achieves Program will continue to distribute food boxes on Wednesdays from 1 to 3 while supplies last in Antioch, Glencliff, Hillwood, and McGavick High Schools, Haywood, and J.E. Moss Elementary Schools. Next slide, please. You know, you can always find greatness in challenging situations. We have proven that we are Team MMPS, and I have managed to add to the team through it all. I couldn't be more proud to be on this team serving alongside you. Thank you for an excellent school year. But before I close, I would like to give you a preview into the planning for the 2020-21 school year. We just spoke about the year that we completed last week, but planning for next year is already well underway. We plan to share additional details in the weeks and months to come, and obviously, conditions could change. But we've been planning not only internally, but also with local health leaders, including Dr. Alex Jahanger, who is a Metro Nashville Public School graduate, by the way, and the chairman of the Metro Coronavirus Task Force, to prepare for various contingencies. We've also been planning with leading pediatricians from Ahary Medical College and Vanderbilt University Medical Center, as well as leaders of Nashville's independent Catholic and charter schools to make sure we're all on the same page about what will be necessary to open our classrooms again. In addition, we've launched our own internal workgroups to refine our plans. We are planning for many different scenarios to open on time for the 2020-21 school year and provide a great quality education regardless of the circumstances we face. We're working with officials again from the Health Department and the mayor's office on that planning. So to be clear, we will do everything in our power to prioritize the health of our students and employees. We hope that conditions allow us to be open in the fall. We will follow the science and the research from around the world. We will take all practical efforts to mitigate against the spread of COVID-19. If conditions do not allow us to open or we need to close again during the school year, we will be poised to transition smoothly and swiftly. The information and data collected through the Remote Learning 2.0 initiative will also help inform those decisions. There's still a lot to do, but I feel good about the progress we've made and confident that we'll be ready for anything when August rolls around. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. That was very informative. I really do appreciate that. I do have some comments to make, but first I want to ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments.
I was going to say, thank you. Oh.
Okay, go ahead.
I was going to say, thank you for your work. I know this has been a unconventional, unorthodox, last couple of months, to say the least. And I mean, obviously, you handle it with grace. And I also want to make just a brief note of our community groups, who also put their arms around our schools during this time. Those who did in traditional, non-traditional ways, the first slide, I know Gideon's Army had a, had a crucial role in that young man's graduation. And we just, I just want to make sure we just thank the community just for the, you know, the output after tornadoes. I know I went to one of the schools and had a difficult time volunteering and finding something to do because we were just bursting at the seams of volunteers, which was a great problem to have. And so just to the community, thank you just for putting your arms around our, our students and showing that they are loved and cared for and that we are, people are looking out for their best interest. And thank you for your leadership, Dr. Battle.
Anybody else?
This is Jill Spearing.
Yes, Speer?
Yes. Dr. Battle, I just want to thank you so much for your leadership. As soon as we had the, the pandemic, you were right on it. Actually, when we had the, the problems with, even before that, you, you were out with food boxes, with the buses, and feeding our students, making sure that everyone was okay. I so appreciate the way you were right on top of remote learning and got those 10,000 laptops distributed to our students and families. And the graduations that happened this month were such a pleasure for our students and their families. And, and now you're already on it for the virtual summer school experience and pre-planning for 2021. Thank you so much for your leadership. You are so appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Speering. Anybody else? Well, I'm done. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to say that we heard a great presentation earlier today from the team on advanced academics and access to college credits and so forth, and really inspiring to hear about all the work that teachers have been doing throughout this entire time. And I know that you have tried to strike a balance between high expectations with a, but with a understanding that teachers are also challenged with taking care of their own kids and managing the pandemic themselves while also being asked to support their students. And so I know that's a really hard balance to strike, but I know our teachers have done such an amazing job, so creative. And so it's inspiring to see this sort of wrap-up of the year and appreciate all your hard work and all your team. So thank you.
Anybody else? Dr. Battle, I know that we distributed, someone mentioned earlier, 10,000 laptops. Did we let the students keep those for summer learning, or did we collect those?
We have allowed our students to keep their longer devices throughout the summer because our ultimate goal is to keep our students engaged. because our ultimate goal is to keep our students engaged. And as I mentioned, we've launched our summer virtual learning experience, which is free of charge to all of our students. It also includes opportunities for parents and guardians as well. And so, we wanted our students to stay connected and to stay engaged. And so, therefore, they have the ability to hang on to their loner devices until the fall. We do have our seniors, our seniors who wrapped up and completed all their graduation requirements, they have started to return their devices. And so, as soon as they're finished with their graduation devices, excuse me, graduation requirements, we will receive their devices back. But for all of our other students, we encourage them to utilize them and connect with us during the virtual summer experience.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. And I know that you mentioned, and I think Ms. Pupple Walker mentioned at the budget finance meeting we have with Metro Council, that MMPS provided meals for their students and still provide meals for their students throughout all of this. And I think we might want to reiterate that. I think that fact was lost in that that's why we have a red line on that particular budget because, you know, we have experienced a loss, but only financially, we gained so much in helping our students and their families that, you know, any loss, for me anyways, negated. So thank you, you know, for continuing to encourage our staff to do that. Anybody else?
This is Fran.
Okay, Fran. Hey.
Hey, how y'all doing?
Good.
Dr. Battle, thank you so much for all you've done. Your team have been exemplary. I mean, you guys have done so much and stepped up. And of course, out here in southeast Davidson County, your old stomping grounds, they are so excited about the work you're doing and the work that you will continue to do for all the students across our district. I just want to let you know that your work never goes unnoticed because you never stop working, right? So you're always doing such a great job, no matter what is thrown at you and what our schools come before us, you always step up. And I'm so grateful that you are our superintendent, director of schools, and that you're going to continue for the next four years to shine and we're going to be there to support you. And just always remember, we got your back. And we are so excited about our future for our kids and our students, our parents, and our teachers. So thank you so much for all that you do. And I think we have, is this our largest graduating class? Can you, I mean, tell me about it, really? So, yes, is this our largest graduating class, you think? Is this what our numbers look like? Uh-huh, going to take credit. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's great. So we should also be so proud about this. So thank you so much for all your hard work and thank you for all you do for all of us. And you always have our blessings. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Anybody else? Thank you, Dr. Battle, for this wonderful report tonight. We appreciate it. We appreciate your work as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And also, again, a huge thank you to the entire team, everyone just stepping up and being willing to do what's best for our students. And we spend little time, the team spend little time coming up with all the reasons we could not accomplish things on behalf of our students and more time on just jumping right in and figuring things out. So a huge thank you to the entire team, all of our teachers, support staff, principals, everyone. Our parents, our kids have just stepped up. The board, thank you again, everyone, for just stepping up and getting through some of the most challenging times I think we've experienced as a district. But there's good to come. We've learned a lot and it will definitely position us well for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. If there are no more questions or comments for Dr. Battle's Director's Report, we'll move on to committee reports that have teaching and learning, the spirit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Teaching and Learning Committee met today, May 26, at 4 o'clock. Strategy two from our strategic plan under our students is to provide equitable access to high-quality, well-rounded opportunities pre-cajun for all of our schools. So I will highlight some of the things that we learned in the early post-secondary opportunities from the presentation today. In terms of advanced placement, many colleges award course credit for those who score a three or higher on the final test. In 2018, 2019, 2,621 students scored a three or higher on the advanced placement test. And opportunities are in all of our high schools. In terms of Cambridge, they offer opportunities for college-level coursework. Presently, Cambridge is at Cambridge, Overton, Gaver, and White's Creek, and we will add Stratford High School in 2021. International Baccalaureate, in 2019, a total of 36 students earned a full IB diploma, and that is very difficult to do, which translates to about a year of college when, if the college accepts that credit, and many do. And they are in three high schools. IB is in three high schools. It's Antioch, Hillsborough, and Hunter's Lane. The dual enrollment and credit opportunities are offered, have been offered since 2013, 2014 across the district. If students meet admission requirements, all MMPS juniors and seniors can opt to take a variety of college-level courses. Each year, the number of participants has increased as well as those passing the test to receive the college credit has increased. Industry certification, in 2013-14, the district offered nine industry certifications in three cluster areas, Pearl Cone, Maplewood, and White's Creek. Those industry certifications include engineering, manufacturing, industrial technology, hospitality, tourism, health, and public services. In 2017-18, the district removed any financial barriers that could have prevented students from attempting a certification. This year, 2,186 students attempted certification or will attempt in the following, in the coming weeks. And there may be, COVID-19 may impact our numbers, but the final pass scores, of course, are not available yet, but will soon be available. So again, I want to thank David Williams, Matt Nelson, Donna Gilli for the excellent presentations today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Speer. It's not on the agenda, but I have a note that Amy Foe would like to give a class report. Is that correct, Amy?
Yes, ready to go. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Sure.
So we are in an unusual time of the legislature being back in session. And so, we are starting back with our class meetings, which usually conclude by May. Session ended early this year because of the pandemic and now the legislature is reconvening to wrap up business. It's unclear at this point whether the legislature will just address the budget or if it will also try to pass new law. One bill still at issue and still in play is the Science of Reading Literacy Bill, which initially reached an impasse at the Senate. This bill is being pushed forward by SCORE, the governor's office, and Amplify, the company that would financially benefit from the passage of the bill. Amplify owns Science of Reading curriculum and its programs include CKLA. The fiscal note on this literacy bill is $70 million, which would be new spending on a new program at a time when state revenues are uncertain. So it's unclear whether this bill will move forward at this time or not. Also, the state has asked the Supreme Court to lift the injunction banning implementation of the new ESA voucher law. The Supreme Court has not yet ruled on this request. Even after a local court ruled that the voucher law was unconstitutional, Governor Lee protected $38 million in the state budget for initial implementation of the program. The legislature may decide to utilize these funds for other state needs. If the state wins the lawsuit on appeal and the ESA program moves forward as planned, costs for the voucher program could be as high as $125 million per year. Another big funding concern that may arise during the last weeks of this legislative session concern maintenance of effort. Our lobbyists will be watching to see if there is any move to relax maintenance of effort requirements. And finally, we discuss the diversion of CARES Act funding to private schools. CARES stands for Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. Betsy DeVos has redirected federal funds initially meant for public schools to private schools instead. Early estimates indicate MMPS CARES funding will be reduced from $26 million to $18 million, and Shelby County schools will likely see a greater reduction. Tennessee is expected to receive $236 million statewide. So I don't have a lot of good news about funding, but it's going to be interesting to see how these next years play out since this is such an unusual time for the state legislature. And that concludes my report today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foe. Appreciate that. We will move on to announcements, and I will start with Dr. Gentry.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. I just want to share some data about some virtual meetings to discuss the principal selection process for a few of the schools in District 1. On May 27, at 5:00 p.m., we will be discussing the principal selection process for Jones, for the Jolton-Haines consolidation. On the 28th, we will be discussing Buena Vista-Jones principal selection process. Again, these are virtual meetings. And the Buena Vista-Jones meeting will take place Thursday on May the 28th at 5:00 p.m. That is a repeat meeting. We will also do a repeat of the White's Creek principal selection process on that same day, May 28, at 3:00 p.m. So just to repeat, apologize, Jolton-Haines, May 27 at 5, White's Creek, a repeat on May 28 at 3, and then Buena Vista-Jones, Thursday, May 28 at 5:00 p.m. These are all virtual meetings, so the links are available on the website and have already been communicated out to families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Gentry. Rachel Layer?
I don't have anything to share at this time.
Okay, thank you. Jill, Ms. Speer?
Yes, congratulations to the Blue Ribbon teachers at Hunter's Lane High School, Jason Proffitt and Ryan Salvagio. Also, Ethan Hanson was awarded the Innovator of the Year Award through the Academies of Nashville. And I just want to say congratulations to all these very deserving educators. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure. Ms. Bugs?
Yes, I just wanted to again highlight and kind of repeat what some of my colleagues said. Thank you again, Dr. Battle, for, you know, acquiescing to the will of the board and joining us as our director. I'm just so happy that it was the will of the board for you to join us. So thank you for all the work you do. And then, on a more somber note, many of, many community members were impacted by a friend of ours passing. Her name was Tia Barbara Hale. She was a graduate of Antioch High School, a Nashville native, and she went on to become an occupational therapist after graduating from Tennessee State. She and her husband Courtney Hale are both major supporters of MMPS and specifically the 37208 area code where Tia did a lot of her work. She supported students at Buena Vista, at Jones, at McKissick. I mean, I just said several schools around the city, and many of our educators knew her and loved her. She had a heart transplant last June and we thought we were in the clear, but, you know, had heart problems this past Monday and she left this earthly plane. So we send our love and our heart out to Courtney and their daughter Ever for them to be strong, MMPS families that were impacted by them. Just, you know, her legacy will continue and we appreciate that her family has set up a fund to support occupational therapists in that 37208 zip code. So if you're looking for ways to memorialize Tia or her family, please feel free to reach out to me or to Courtney Hale and find out about ways to support them. And lastly, Dr. Battle, I'm really, really excited to hear about the different plans that are in the works for the 2021 school year just because things are so up in the air. So thank you for at least giving us that teaser that, you know, the thing that we've all been thinking, the thing that all of Nashville is asking about, what will the fall look like? So thank you for thinking through those things and being ready with different plans.
Thank you, Ms. Bugs. Ms. Bush?
No announcement. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Pupple Walker?
Thank you. I want to start by thanking the amazing Hillsborough faculty for an amazing graduation, drive-through graduation last week. And much more moving, I think we can all agree, than we would have ever imagined to see a drive-through graduation so profound. Want to give a big shout-out to all of our high school students who took AP tests online and stuck with it and submitted and did all that work. I know it was really hard and hope it went well. Want to thank the Julia Green PTO for, I saw the contract on our consent agenda for funding our walking track around the school. I know the neighbors will truly appreciate that and especially now when, you know, people have to get outside and do some walking more than usual. Want to give a shout-out, I noticed also on the consent agenda, that we are funding through Title II Praxis exams for our parapros and different folks to become certified teachers. I think that is a really important move on our behalf and appreciate Chris Barnes and all the team there for this really innovative approach. And then the last thing I want to say is I want to thank National Public Education Foundation and the Tennessee College Access and Success Network for their latest publication of their Bridge to Completion Report, which has a ton of data that supplements the data we received today in the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting and really breaks down where our students are and where we are as a district in preparing our kids for college and career. And that's a lot of work that they do every year to really help us and guide us. And so, appreciate their work. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Frida?
One thing I'd like to say, excuse me, is I had my first graduation with Glencliff High School Saturday ago. And I will say, even though it was unusual, but it was one of the most, it was the most fun I ever had at a graduation. I know you were saying, I was talking to the principal there and we were saying how, you know, our traditional graduation is not that much fun and to have the drive, to see the excitement and see the tears and the joy from the confetti, little bombs going off. It was a great fun time to have on a weekend. And so, hopefully, as we continue to have more ceremonies into the future, I just want to say to the graduates, thank you. And I had a really sincere, fun time just seeing all the graduates come through from all the different nationalities and diverse that we had and seeing first generation and multi-generation come through. Really warmed your heart and that even through all of this, that was still blessings that come up to see great things still happen and joy happen during this time in our community. So thank you for letting me be a part of it and we'll see some more in the future.
Yes, we will. Ms. Foe?
Hi. So I also wanted to congratulate, I feel like I'm sitting way in the dark here, but that's where we are today. I just also want to congratulate our Blue Ribbon teachers. I have a bunch in my district. We have Christopher Foster, also known as Eli Foster, at Bellevue Middle School. And some of y'all might remember his three-legged stool speech from a few years ago at the board. Nicole Healy at Middle College. Krista Ann Sumner at Harpeth Valley Elementary. Kathleen Bell at HG Hill Middle, who, God bless her, had to teach my son recently. And Alexandra Thurman at Charlotte Park Elementary. Just want to thank these teachers who are phenomenal and also all of our wonderful teachers. I know it's been a hard year, but we really appreciate your efforts and thank you.
We do. I have a couple myself. I just want to give a shout-out to the community chiefs coordinators at both Two Rivers Middle School and Dupont Hadley Middle School. Nicole Vaughn is at Two Rivers and Mindy Fielder is at Dupont Hadley. They both organized a wonderful partnership meeting in the last couple of weeks where we had a virtual meeting and we got to get online and see, you know, what our challenges were, what our needs are, and what our steps forward were. These two young ladies are amazing and they do such a great job for the students and families in our schools. And I want to also thank my colleagues for attending the special call meeting last Tuesday for the purposes of passing a budget and also attending the Tuesday for the purposes of passing a budget, and also attending the virtual meeting with the council last Thursday. We had a lot of tough questions, some comments. You know, we know this budget like the backs of our hands because we've looked at it for so long, and we've had, you know, we've been able to contribute to it. So, sometimes it's just like taking three steps backwards to explain, you know, the logic behind why we put certain dollar amounts where we put them. But I appreciate y'all attending. I like your answers and responses were great, as well as reminding them that we continue to provide meals for our students and families. And I think that's a point that's lost, but that we need to continue to make, that we are, you know, continuing to take care of our students and families. This morning, there was a parade in honor of Mr. Robert Hall, who is retiring at the end of this year. And, oh, hopefully, he can get through this. We wish him good luck and good, you know, good things. I see he promised us four years, and he gave us eleven, so we should be good. And seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.